We have just an interesting piece to look at.
Why not?
Right. How did they manage to leave that?
I don't know. It was the last year in 1940. When the, uh, how do you pick over the border?
I don't think I've.
Well, I don't think that's why. Justice Street, like 2013.
Are they?
No. They came there for 30 years. I know I first moved and bought my house there on the corner of Gifford and Main.
Is there anybody here from your son?
At that point, I was different than that.
Is there something in your space?
They were smaller, so I didn't go right away.
Hello.
Are you with Excel?
I'm not with, uh, French. I didn't.
She doesn't throw it on the floor.
You just get it, didn't you?
That's all right.
Well, that's good.
All right, Excel.
Okay. Hidden room, John.
It's been empty since June. First time ever. Since I moved, it's been summer.
Taylor, is this on when it's the negative or is it?
When it's on the line, it's on.
I don't know. I got it tomorrow.
Oh, okay. His name is Tim.
I had a call.
Or we have some questions for him.
I had a call.
Or does he got to?
No, I don't do any.
Is he going to speak at that time or do one of the?
They're firm today like that, like that. My kids start off, I think they have them last night. They started in the early morning.
Tim Prowse?
This afternoon, I helped them.
Where's Tim Prowse?
Nope.
Good man.
Thank you.
I'd like to add.
Twenty-one. Yeah. That's the border line. White Horns, twenty-three.
We have to receive those.
They told you they were going to tell one.
They're after them. They've got a 20,000 contract down Bellegan, Jeff and all plants got to be filled by Friday. Early morning. I didn't. Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm on a white, white, need to fill it, Mike.
What's the hardest one for you?
One ninety-four.
One ninety-four.
What it was last night.
Yeah. He's probably.
Do they find us?
The progress of public.
Okay. You guys ready? We're going to ask for that to be added. Oh, it's added. For, when we add that to the agenda.
Brenda has the language for adding it.
Yeah, okay. All right, everybody set? All right, we're going to call the meeting order. It's after six, but we waited till everybody got seated. Welcome to this Monday, September twentieth Board of Trustees meeting. Very happy to see they're almost filling the seats. This is very cool. Thank you for coming. All right, we're going to need a roll call.
Supervisor Howe?
Here.
Clerk Butler Challenger here. Treasurer Whisthuster?
Yes, here.
Trustee Amorigi?
Here.
Trustee Bensy?
Here.
Trustee Ryan Spillings Bliss and Trustee Al Rosecrand are absent this evening.
Okay, so we have two that are absent. Okay. This still leaves us with a quorum, so we're good. All right, civil reflections. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance, so if you would stand, we'll have a moment of silence after the fact.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Um, yes, there should be one on the agenda or on the podium, excuse me. You're welcome. If there's not, we can make more. Thank you.
Did you get it? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to have approval of agenda, but apparently there's a piece.
Yeah.
Brenda, our clerk is going to be adding.
I'd like to motion to approve the agenda with amendments. The first one is going to be under fourteen B.C. We would like to add FOIA appeal for gallows of the law. We need to receive her correspondence on that one. The second one is under fourteen A.D. James Cousins Park tree removal.
Okay. Does everybody understand? Okay, good. All right, we need a motion to attend.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended. Your call.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
All right, that's, I'm assuming is, okay, it's unanimous. So we're going to approve the agenda with amendments. We'll go to four, which is now disclosure of conflicts of interest. None at this time. Okay, five will be our first public statements. These are three minutes for anything that's on the agenda.
We've got Cherry Street on the agenda again tonight. I just wanted to further reiterate that we have the adjacent property orders here tonight in attendance. Eager to learn more about the process that we have to go through to complete what the county, um, we thought was the ending point. Was just another pivot point for another direction for us to have to go. So, um, we're here tonight to kind of listen to what you have to say about that township side of it. And if you have any insight on where we need to go from here to kind of complete the process. Again, we're just trying to subdivide the property off of the abandoned area. We're trying to subdivide it off to the property owners that are adjacent to it. It is our role. And we would kind of like to hear, and I'm sure the four property owners, including myself, would like to hear what the board has to say about it. If they want the property, which I don't think you do, but, you know, any direction that you can give us on this would be helpful. We're in the process, you know, through a couple emails due, of trying to figure out how Chestnut Street came about. You have a gentleman here tonight gave us some insight. It was back in 1940. I thought it was a lot sooner, uh, 2013. Apparently it was in 1940 that that ended up, that almost changed around to dead end. So it's the same, same thing that we're trying to do, but I don't know if anything's changed legislatively to do that. But we're learning more about the process and what we're able to do to have to say about it.
Thank you, Rob. Is there anybody else?
My name is Maggie Ritchie and I live on Harwood Drive. And I have a couple of notes. They're really for just a moment. Number one. Number two, last meeting, you posted the agenda to include Ms. Hill to business job description after changing it in five places. More importantly, a shift in power. Rules of Robert, Robert's rules of orders were stated, but no one really has time to check for appropriateness or equitability of that because it happens thirty seconds before you go ahead and take your vote. Which will bring me to a momentary. Not only did it change Ms. Hill's job, it changed Supervisor's job, given clerk's job. And I ask that you revisit, rethink, or recall that vote, which I hope you're going to add to the agenda this evening. Uh, I think, gosh, I think you know that when you did it and you did it anyway. And you are accountable. Previously, you allocated this house the power to set the agenda in the exact same type of vote. And anyway, I was, that's when I made you, I left my busy boy and come down here because I was watching my screen on my, uh, on my phone. And I just want you to know that I see you and I hear you and people are giving attention. Do the right thing, which brings me to number three, meeting minutes. I'm going to ask that you not approve last meeting's minutes. The minutes are not unbiased, they're not impartial, and they're not neutral. And they have not been for quite some time. And I want to tell you a short bit about it. When I heard that Maria Howe was going to be running for township supervisor, I knew right away that I was going to vote for her. I couldn't remember whether or not she was a Democrat or a Republican, but I knew I was going to be voted for. Her moral ethical code was unshakable and she and I may not always agree, but I knew she would stand her ground. She wouldn't let anyone bully her. She would not be intimidated. Her moral compass would not be altered, not by me, not by anybody. And I argued with myself and my others not whether I should come down here because I owe money on my taxes. And the most reasonable thing for me to do would be keep my head down, stay low, stay under the radar, but do the right thing, save myself. I'm going to do what I think is the right thing. I'm sure you understand my conundrum there. But I, I want you to know that the angry, the loud, the boisterous are going to tell you, you're doing a great job. Well, you're not. Many of us are watching. We're hoping, try harder, get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Is there anybody else who'd like to have public comments? All right, we're going to go to six. I think Adam's back there for the county, state, federal, or other agencies.
Does any of the congresspeople ever come here and have a representative? Do we just leave that fan on every day? I don't think it's ever been activated. Uh, just to give you a quick update, I don't know what the last time I did that, but it's not, the instructions aren't officially out because I think LEAP is still smoothing them over with our consultant. But the county did approve to spend up to $2 million of our American Rescue Plan Act for small business relief for Clinton County. Breaking down the different categories, different sectors of the economy because we know that even though the restaurant hospitality industry is hard to say, we also know that they actually have access to different programs and funds that maybe some of the other small businesses don't. So I expect to see the instructions for that coming fairly soon, the next couple of weeks. And then the application period will be through November and then hopefully it's our intention to have the money start to be distributed by around Thanksgiving, really December. So it's our idea to get this money out there quickly so you can actually do some good. Um, the Moles County Park, you know that, that lake we have north of St. John's, the properties to the west, which we call Clinton Lakes, which is a really dumb name, but, you know, we're stuck with it now. They're actually doing a good job right now. They're paving that. Right now it's been very passive recreation. There's been a lot of dirt and sand and it's kind of a good, you know, probably 200 yard walk from that park, you know, all the way to where that beach is. Uh, so they're paving that right now. They're in construction projects that will have the parking lot a little bit closer so people can utilize that beach more. And they're going to do better signage and some, uh, just, uh, grading on the smaller lake there to designate that specifically as a dog beach because, you know, the health code says if we have humans swimming, you shouldn't have dogs. So one design of the smaller area, if you have that, because we've seen a lot of dogs up there, it's like, if you got your dog, go ahead and use it over here. If it's a swimming area, that's for the humans only. I know that it's not, they're not the greatest stretch for E. coli breakouts, but they are a contributing factor. I know that you guys have had issues with E. coli in park lakes and want to do as much as we can to, you know, minimize any contamination with it. Our commission is asking the county for bonding authority to build a new facility. Uh, they're going to use their existing gas tax revenue to construct that new facility. Uh, I've been the only no vote on there, not because I don't think they need a new facility, but I think it's a little too soon because I'd like to see more of that, uh, gas tax increase of the past couple of years ago go and improve the roads. I've looked at the Pacer data. They've done a good job of taking a lot of the poorer roads and putting it into that middle and fair condition, but those good roads are kind of not really moving much. I mean, obviously you want to put the investment in the poor and bring it up so that you're not putting too much money into, you know, rebuilding roads. But I think sometimes when we drive around Michigan, we kind of get used to a certain level of mediocrity in the roads and, you know, we have a chance to travel around the country, we realize, oh, you mean there is a different standard for roads. You know, we kind of, you know, lose that. So I, I think they're a couple of years early. They're still, they're going to go ahead and we're probably going to need that maintenance facility anyway. Uh, it shouldn't change too much of the money they're putting directly in the roads because they've gotten some savings from reducing some of their OPEB payments and they've got a little bit of savings on their annual budget on there. Um, we've reactivated the infrastructure committee. We're doing a comprehensive review of all of our capital projects. Uh, we've received $14 million in American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we think we can do a pretty good job of using a lot of that money as revenue replacement and putting it directly into some long-term infrastructure. So we're looking at what our long-term needs are. Fortunately, I've heard different deadlines for different levels of government. I heard a lot of some of the rural townships are saying, we need to have a plan in place to spend our money like by next month. Uh, we don't have to spend that money for another three years. So we're just taking our time and making sure we're putting that money into one-time expenses. Um, another issue that's out there, I don't want to get too far ahead, but obviously we heard that the president announces intention to put a vaccine mandate for private employers of 100 or more. That hasn't been done yet. They're still working through the rulemaking process. Apparently because of the way MiOSHA works, that if you put some kind of one standard on a private business, it has applied to public business. So we've been told by Michigan Association of Counties that we would apply to that too, since we're a employer of over 100. I know that Mark Hackel in McCollum County decided he's not going to do it. So I imagine McCollum's got better waters than we do. So if they think it applies to them, it's probably going to apply to us too. So we haven't made any decisions. It's kind of receiving a bit of a lukewarm flood right now with the county. Uh, our perspective is, and we've done a pretty good job of keeping our facilities clean, but our perspective is that, you know, you can, you can contract COVID just as easily to be a carrier if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So mandating unvaccinated people get vaccinated, that's going to help them. If they get sick, they're going to be able to, you know, survive the, survive the infection, but it's not going to do anything to make the rest of us safer. Like it just as easily contracted from a, from a vaccinated individual that's unvaccinated. But those decisions are probably, we will probably won't have to make for another couple of months, but it's just kind of on the horizon. So that was a lot to get through, but that's the end of our report. If anyone has any questions.
Does it look like there is? Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else from county, state, federal, or other agencies at this time? I'm going to wait for you. Not yet. Okay, we're going to go to seven, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion for a roll call?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll support it. Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that appears to be unanimous vote for consent agenda. We're going to move to the approval of the minutes, which is eight on your agenda. Ms. Ritchie asked if that, well, this would not be approved, but the other one. Well, this one would be the one to be approved. So is there a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, second.
Ms. Howe?
I'm going to say no. I think she makes a point.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that appears to be unanimous vote for consent agenda. We're going to move to the approval of the minutes, which is eight on your agenda. Ms. Ritchie asked if that, well, this would not be approved, but the other one. Well, this one would be the one to be approved. So is there a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, second.
Ms. Howe?
I'm going to say no. I think she makes a point.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
All right, that is a one, two, three, four to one. Thank you. All right, we'll go to nine, which is the approval of vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Support.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Amorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
I say yes.
We're on ten, which is the treasurer report, which apparently there is none.
None tonight.
So you're good. So we go to eleven, committee appointments. There doesn't seem to be any. So we'll go to twelve, township committee report, none. Thirteen, we have unfinished business. We have items for introduction and discussion. Because that is a, which is our brand of Cherry Street, I'm going to ask again for committee as a whole for a discussion, if the board so deems. Okay. So there is no discussion then?
I was going to discuss about legal counsel's findings.
Well, did they have that already?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, at the last board meeting, we were awaiting our legal counsel to work through what the Clinton County Road Commission's legal counsel, whether to assess if the path forward, there had been talk about, um, the township being able to pass a resolution, um, which would grant the, um, the division of the property. And our legal counsel studied that along with the Clinton County Legal Counsel's, um, so I'm sorry, Clinton County Road Commission's legal counsel. Um, they went back and referenced a section of law, um, that has not been heavily litigated according to our attorney, and there is very sparse case law relating to its application. Um, our legal counsel basically said any action by the township to pass a resolution would create potentially additional issues of jurisdiction, property rights, and title transfer that could negatively impact the property owners. Um, our counsel also sought counsel from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. There's an office there of land survey and remonumentation. And that department administers the recording of new subdivisions as well as replating and vacations of land, which is, is what this is considered as a vacation of land. Um, a land survey specialist with that office indicated that for the township, um, to, to pass a resolution vacating the street would really have limited effect on addressing the property rights. Um, I, I did, I didn't understand what that meant at the time, so I asked our assessor to weigh in. And it basically means that, and her, there's a memo attached from Assessor Beth Botke, that the adjacent property owners, as a result of our action, would lack the six rights associated with ownership of property, which included the right to use, sell, lease slash rent, enter slash leave, give away, or refuse to do any of these. As a result, and after working through all of the options, our legal counsel has recommended that the property owners file a circuit court action to vacate the street and to allow them to have a clean transfer of title.
Is there any questions?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
When we have the public comments, because they wouldn't go with committee as a whole, so there's not a discussion. It's taking place. But I do have a question. Uh, my question, and this goes, and I don't see her here. Um, these six bundles that she talks about, that there are rights of the property owner. If you sell your property and it wouldn't include that 33 feet, what happens to it?
It's essentially, it would be no man's land. So it would still sit there as no man's land because no one.
So it's not on our tax roll? It isn't anything that?
No, it's not on, it's not anything at this time.
Huh.
A resolution by us would not give them property rights.
No, I guess I understand that, but once the county, help me to understand this one. It is not because I don't like it, like you said, it's because I don't really understand it. If the county abandons it, the township has the option of either picking it up or.
They, they only, I'm sorry to.
No, no, no.
They only abandon the right for the public to use it.
Correct.
Yes.
So they didn't abandon, they didn't abandon it and give it to us. It's, it's sitting as no man's land right now. All that was vacated at that time was the right for the public to.
To cross it.
To walk on it and, and to use it as a road.
Right. So it's not on our tax roll. It's, it's a no man's land.
It's, it's a no man's land right now.
Okay. So if the township then were to not do any action with it, what apparently I'm understanding is that the township then with no action, has no action. The county has abandoned the right of way, so meaning that this 30, this 66 feet by 313 feet becomes nothing.
No man's land.
So.
No one has a right to it at this point.
No one has the right, so it's not on our tax roll. It's not, we don't have a right to it. So any ordinance that we have isn't impacted by it. Correct?
It's within the township, so it, it would be impacted by our ordinances.
But we don't own it.
I understand that, but we don't, we don't own a lot of land in the township and ordinance does still apply to the land in the township. It's within the township.
But somebody owns it. See, I'm having a hard time grasping the idea that it's nothing, that it's just there. So what you're saying is even though it's there, we as the township still are responsible for it.
We would have to, as well as the property owners would have to, we would have to go to circuit court to have it given to us.
Right. Okay, no, I understand that, but you're saying that the ordinances are then, are in effect for.
Yes, because it's within the township.
But nobody owns it. So who do you write the ordinance for?
Well, it would depend on what was occurring on the property.
Okay.
If, if I was dumping trash on the property, then, then the, then because I was dumping trash on the property, I could be given a ticket because I'm dumping trash on property. It doesn't necessarily have to be my property.
But it's nobody's property.
Correct.
Okay. That doesn't seem logical, but that's okay.
Okay.
I understand. No, that's.
Okay, I just offer, so the person who's, all right, perpetrating the violation of the ordinance would be the one that you would cite in violation of the ordinance?
Who would you cite it to?
The person who's creating the, violating the ordinance.
Me, if I was dumping garbage.
Okay.
So if someone was making.
If you knew who it was?
Yes, if you knew who it was.
Okay. But if you didn't know who it was, because it's not on a tax roll and it doesn't belong to anybody, then it becomes.
So the township has a noise ordinance, right? So if I'm in Whisthuster Park, or I'm on my property, or I'm on someone else's property and I'm violating the noise ordinance, I'm the one that can still be cited for that.
Because.
It's irrespective of where you are, except within the township.
But it's no man's land.
No, focus on the person, not the location.
We, we cannot, the, the, the final result is, is that the, the county cannot give them land rights, we cannot give them land rights. The only way for these four adjacent property owners to go and get land rights is to go to circuit court and be granted land rights from the court.
So you don't have land rights, so when they abandon, when, when the town, or when the county abandoned the right of way, they just abandoned the right of way. And that left a negative.
It just leaves it sitting there. It's not a road anymore.
Because we don't, we don't have their resolution yet, but we're assuming that that's what they're saying is that they're just going to abandon the right of way.
That's all they can abandon is the right of way.
So in doing so, the township then, if there's no authority, they, they either, so they can't walk away, they can't purchase without, or they can't have an authority.
They can't build on it, they can't, they can't anything on it.
Well, do anything with it. So the four landowners then that are contiguous to this 66 by 313 have no authority is what you're saying.
They can go as a group of, yes.
No, unless they go to circuit court.
Unless they go to circuit court and get the authority that it becomes theirs.
Okay. So is, but if you ignore, if, if our township says, no, we don't, we're not going to do anything with it.
It's going to sit there and it's not going to.
No, just.
Challenger, yes. Mr. Elmeri.
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
All right, that is a one, two, three, four to one. Thank you. All right, we'll go to nine, which is the approval of vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve of the vouchers.
Four.
Ms. Butler, challenger, yes. Mr. Elmeri.
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
I say yes. We're on ten, which is the Treasury report, which apparently there is none.
None tonight.
So you're good. So we go to eleven, committee appointments. There doesn't seem to be any. So we'll go to twelve, township committee report, none. Thirteen, we have unfinished business. We have items for introduction and discussion. Because that is a, which is our brand under Cherry Street, I'm going to ask again for committee as a whole, for a discussion, if the board so deems. Okay. So there is no discussion then?
I was going to discuss about legal counsel's findings.
Well, did they have that already?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, we were awaiting our legal counsel to work through with the Clinton County Road Commission's legal counsel, whether to assess if the path forward, there had been talk about the township being able to pass a resolution, which would grant the division of the property. And our legal counsel studied that along with the Clinton County Legal Counsel's, I'm sorry, Clinton County Road Commission's legal counsel. They went back and referenced a section of law that has not been heavily litigated, according to our attorney, and there is very sparse case law relating to its application. Our legal counsel basically said any action by the township to pass a resolution would create potentially additional issues of jurisdiction, property rights, and title transfer that could negatively impact the property owners. Our counsel also sought counsel from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. There's an office there of land survey and re-monumentation. And that department administers the recording of new subdivisions, as well as replating and vacations of land, which is what this is considered as a vacation of land. A land survey specialist with that office indicated that for the township, to pass a resolution vacating the street would really have limited effect on addressing the property rights. I didn't understand what that meant at the time, so I asked our assessor to weigh in. And it basically means that, and her, there's a memo attached from Assessor Beth Botkey, that the adjacent property owners, as a result of our action, would lack the six rights associated with ownership of property, which included the right to use, sell, lease/rent, enter/leave, give away, or refuse to do any of these. As a result, and after working through all of the options, our legal counsel has recommended that the property owners file a circuit court action to vacate the street and to allow them to have a clean transfer of title.
Is there any questions? When we have the public comments, because they wouldn't go with committee as a whole, so there's not a discussion. It's taking place. But I do have a question. My question, and this goes, and I don't see her here. These six bundles that she talks about, that there are rights to the property owner. If you sell your property and it wouldn't include that thirty-three feet, what happens to it?
It's essentially, it would be no man's land, so it would still sit there as no man's land because no one-
So it's not on our tax roll? It isn't anything that-
No. It's not on, it's not anything at this time.
Huh.
A resolution by us would not give them property rights.
No, I guess I understand that, but once the county, help me to understand this one. It is not because I don't like it, like you said, it's because I don't really understand it. If the county abandons it, the township has the option of either picking it up or-
They only, I'm sorry to-
No, no, no.
They only abandoned the right for the public to use it.
Correct. Yes.
So they didn't abandon, they didn't abandon it and give it to us. It's sitting as no man's land right now. All that was vacated at that time was the right for the public to-
To cross it.
To walk on it and to use it as a road.
So it's not on our tax roll? It's a no man's land?
It's a no man's land right now.
So if the township then were to not do any action with it, what apparently I'm understanding is that the township then with no action, has no action. The county has abandoned the right of way, so, meaning that this thirty, this sixty-six feet by three hundred and thirteen feet becomes-
No man's land.
So-
No one has a right to it at this point.
No one has a right, so it's not on our tax roll, it's not, we don't have a right to it. So any ordinance that we have isn't impacted by it. Correct?
It's within the township, so it would be impacted by our ordinances.
But we don't own it.
I understand that, but we don't, we don't own a lot of land in the township, and ordinance does still apply to the land in the township. It's within the township.
But somebody owns it. See, I'm having a hard time grasping the idea that it's nothing, that it's just there. So what you're saying is even though it's there, we as the township still are responsible for it?
We would have to, as well as the property owners would have to, we would have to go to circuit court to have it given to us.
Okay. No, I understand that, but you're saying that the ordinances are then, are in effect for-
Yes, because it's within the township.
But nobody owns it. So who do you write the ordinance for?
It would depend on what was occurring on the property.
Okay.
If I was dumping trash on the property, then, then the, then because I was dumping trash on the property, I could be given a ticket because I'm dumping trash on property. It doesn't necessarily have to be my property.
But it's nobody's property.
Correct.
Okay. That doesn't seem logical, but that's okay. I understand. No, that's-
I just, so the person who's perpetrating the violation of the ordinance would be the one that you would cite in violation of the ordinance?
Who would you cite it to?
The person who's creating the, violating the ordinance.
Okay.
So if someone was making-
If you knew who it was?
Yes, if you knew who it was.
But if you didn't know who it was, because it's not on a tax roll and it doesn't belong to anybody, then it becomes-
So the township has a noise ordinance, right? So if I'm in Wisswasser Park, or I'm on my property, or I'm on someone else's property, and I'm violating the noise ordinance, I'm the one that can still be cited for that.
Because-
It's irrespective of where you are, except within the township.
But it's no man's land.
No, focus on the person, not the location.
We cannot, the final result is that the county cannot give them land rights, we cannot give them land rights. The only way for these four adjacent property owners to go and get land rights is to go to circuit court and be granted land rights from the court.
So you don't have land rights, so when they abandon, when the town, or when the county abandoned the right of way, they just abandoned the right of way, and that left a negative-
It just leaves it sitting there. It's not a road anymore.
Because we don't, we don't have their resolution yet, but we're assuming that, that's what they're saying, is that they're just going to abandon the right of way.
That's all they can abandon is the right of way.
So in doing so, the township then, if there's no authority, they either, so they can't walk away, they can't purchase without, or they can't have an authority-
They can't build on it, they can't, they can't anything on it.
Do anything with it. So the four landowners then, that are contiguous to this sixty-six by three thirteen, have no authority.
They can go as a group of, yes.
No, unless they go to circuit court.
Unless they go to circuit court and get the authority that it becomes theirs.
So, but if you ignore, if our township says, no, we don't, we're not going to do anything with it.
It's going to sit there and it's not going to-
Just sit there.
It's going to sit there and it's not going to belong to anybody. And, and, and people could go play ball on it. Nobody would probably stop them from going to play ball on it, but you couldn't, you couldn't use it. I'm just saying, like, it's, it's, it's just, it's just land that's just sitting there, and, and nobody can really use it for anything. I was making light of the fact that I could go play ball on it, but, but I can't go, I mean, Rob lives next door, I'm sorry, Rob. Adjacent property owner, or any of them, yeah, could, you know, certainly walk there and do things there, but it's not technically theirs, so when they-
And it's not our township's? It doesn't belong to us either?
No, we don't own it either. But if somebody wants to own it, they can go to town, they can go to circuit court and get the rights to it.
Could I go to circuit court and I'm probably right, so?
No.
No.
Just, I'm just wondering.
I don't want to confuse this guy.
Yeah.
Their pathway is to go to circuit court before them, okay.
Because it's plotted and plotted.
They have, you got that? Okay.
We can't just-
No, I understand what you're saying.
Can I help you?
Of course you can, Steve.
You gotta have a parcel number, ID, for it, because they can belong to somebody, whether it's the township, the county, or all the folks sitting in the audience here. If you don't have a parcel number, you're, it's not going to belong to anybody.
That, that even helps me, thank you.
Circuit court will take them from, look at this, and they'll probably draw it out, and whomever is adjacent to it, which I haven't stayed up on this to see exactly who each one of the landowners are is adjacent to it.
They can raise their hands if you want.
And the reason why I know this, some of this is because years ago, there was a thing called Rails for Trails in Bath, and the railroad went right down to Bath. I bought a mile of it. Bought the whole thing, technically, four farmers went together and we all bought it, and then we split it back out to everybody that wanted to have it. But that's how that works. You gotta go to court, you gotta get, it costs a lot of money, it cost us a lot of money, and we did it because we had to get attorneys. We didn't have the, all this, you've done, you've done all the work for these people doing what you did. But you gotta, you gotta go to court, you gotta get your legal counsel, or your legal, your circuit court will take and make a transfer title if they see the legal easement as being a legal easement, which I'm sure it is, I can't imagine it being anything else. Then it'll have a parcel number. I think, if I read right what you've brought back, the parcel number will actually be, will be the same, will be added on to what you have as a parcel number that's adjacent to it now. And I don't think this is even a matter of taxes, but I can't say that. I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but I don't think that you get taxed for, for any more land because of the way you're getting it. But don't quote me on that.
No.
I'm not the assessor.
So in other words, with the land that doesn't belong to anybody, we're alleging it doesn't belong to anybody. It doesn't belong to the county, it doesn't belong to Bath Township. It's a no man's land that's sitting there. So with lands that we've purchased, that Bath Township has purchased, being platted, they would have to go into circuit court. If it's not platted, and it's common law, township-
No, 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 you're, you're trying to compare something completely different.
Okay, that's what I-
They just need to, the four owners, if that's who, if it's all four owners-
I know that's what you're saying.
Get together, and they go, and they say, the road commission abandoned the public right of way, and now we as the four, of property adjacent property owners, sorry, that's a mouthful, want to divide this equally, if that's their agreement, and we would like you to assign ownership to the four of us. And then it would, if that's what the court decided, they would give each adjacent property owner their piece of it and assign-
Property ID.
A property ID to it.
Property ID number. No, I understand, that part I get, having to go into circuit court. The part that I'm having, that I'm struggling with, is where Bath Township is with this.
We're, we're-
In their, and what you're saying is, we're nowhere.
We're nowhere.
Okay. And this six bundle thing doesn't really tell me anything. I'm not sure-
They, unless they go to circuit court, they cannot buy, sell-
That's what I'm-
They, they, they don't have those rights to that property.
Okay.
Unless they go get those rights from circuit court.
So there's no use, so according to what Beth is saying, they can't use it. They can't sell, so no one can put anything on it. So this sixty-six feet by three thirteen, nothing can be done. It's, they can't use it, they can't sell it, they can't lease or rent it. They can't enter or leave, so walking across-
Oh, I was making light, but I'm, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that. I was just saying, like, it's, it's just nobody's-
Looking here, the right to enter or leave, so you have to walk around it, because it's saying that you can't enter or leave, that you can't give it away, which you don't want to give it away anyway, and the right to refuse to do any of these, so your six, well, there's actually five, things that you can't do. Okay, that's what I'm trying to, because this didn't make any sense to me.
So, I mean, could the township say, we wanted to acquire that land as a township for? I'm not saying that we do want to do that. What I'm asking is, we could go to circuit courts to-
Sure.
The reason I bring that up is that, my understanding, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and an impression of the board, we're not interested in the land.
We're not.
So-
To my understanding.
There's a single process for moving forward, and that's for the property owners. If they want the land to go to circuit court to get the documentation put forward to acquire the land.
That's where they're at.
Okay. Nope, that's- Okay. We are at B, the COVID, actually it's thirteen B. The mitigations strategies.
Yep.
Is that what you're going to talk about?
Yep. I was waiting for, so we've talked a great deal about the Senior Center and the safety protocols for the older adults that attend the Senior Center. And there has been concern that they're not fully vaccinated, and therefore, we have had people indicate that they cannot, they would not go to the center. I'm sorry, I'm being distracted. I, I just-
Sorry.
Okay.
We appreciate the information you gave us, but we're going to go talk about it.
Sorry. So I brought back, in, in light of not being able to mandate a vaccination policy for them, was asked to bring back things that we could do there, and I am willing to implement all of the items that are contained in this list to try to improve safety conditions and health conditions for the Senior Center in order to make it safer for them. Number one on the list was continuing to promote vaccinations and boosters. We have offered that to everyone throughout, throughout COVID, even when the Senior Center wasn't open. And if there should be a barrier to that, finding out what that is, and helping them if it's transportation or scheduling, so we would assist them with those items. Taking temperatures, I believe that was recommended by Judy Gardi, and I thought that was a good example. Also using screening questions when people come into the center. I know that there's been questions about the enforcement and consistent and correct mask wearing, so we would, we would do that as well. If there are face masks that are ill-fitting, or just keep dropping down below people's noses, we could provide face masks, which we, we do at the time, but we could, you know, be more proactive in helping people with that. Installation of a hand washing station, and I, I understand this could be confusing. There's a, currently, there's a drinking fountain that's located near the restrooms at the center. I would replace that with a hand washing station, so it's within the building, but it's near the front of the building. And it's a convenient place once they come in to go ahead and wash their hands. I know people were concerned about people, other people being able to get to-go meals if they didn't want to attend the Senior Center and stay for the, for the activities. So having a better to-go process or a delivery system if people should need that. And then, second to last, assessing the ventilation, that is something we have not done. We improved, replaced, excuse me, the furnace in 2014 when we updated the Senior Center. So having an assessment done on that, if there's an additional filtration system or a ventilation system, air exchange that we can do out there, that might help. And last but not least, and I would certainly use this more as needed if COVID numbers were rising, but reducing the number of patrons attending meals or programming in order to increase the physical distance. But I would use that one as a last resort. Numbers have been sufficient between forty and fifty to fifty-five at this time, so they're not anywhere near even half capacity at this time. So I think that that would be a last resort for them. So I brought these to you to see if these would, would, would help ease your mind and that we are treating them with the highest level of safety and consideration in COVID, as they are the ones that are the most vulnerable, and, and to see if, if, if this is what you had in mind.
My question being, when you say staff is going to do this, is it one individual that's going to monitor this, or are you going to have a group?
We've, we've had volunteers actually from the Senior Services Advisory Board-
So it's not staff?
It's staff and-
Okay.
And individuals that have been helping. There have been a couple of individuals that have volunteered their time, and they're helping, they're offering people masks and hand sanitizer as they come in, and, and offering to get drinks so that there's not a line of people trying to obtain drinks and standing close together, so. I, it would be staff primarily and then volunteers assisting us.
Okay, assisting us. Who's us?
There's, there's five staff members over there.
Nope, that's-
So they, assisting them.
And those would include your, because I see Jason. That would include, when you say there's five staff, that means the director, and who, who's, who's the staff? I'm sorry.
So, yep, there's a coordinator, and then there is a woman that takes the money for the meals.
And she's a staff, not a volunteer?
Nope, she's staff.
Okay.
And so when people were to come in, if they weren't, didn't have a mask on, she would of course offer them masks. There are three people in the kitchen that have contact, that have contact with getting drinks for people and helping them if they need assistance, so any of them as well could offer hand sanitizer, masks, staff. Yep.
Got it. All right, Trustee Elmeri.
Has, has the Senior Services Coordinator scheduled a time for a vaccination clinic?
I believe.
I believe she has reached out and decided on a time. I'm not sure if they have gotten back with her. I'll have to follow up with her on that.
It was our intention to hold a clinic, though.
Okay.
Yep. And we, we generally hold a flu and pneumonia clinic as well.
Oh, do you?
So, yeah, yeah, every October.
The others, have you had a chance to reach out to the Senior Ambassadors Program through MSU?
No, I wasn't aware of them. I'm sorry.
No, it was, um-
Not many are.
Well, it was, it was an email that I'd sent to Brittany and you and Taylor-
Oh, okay.
On MSU students who volunteer.
Okay.
There might be a possible collaboration there.
Okay.
That would be free of cost.
The nurse group?
They're social science students, and so-
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I think I have overlooked that email. We used to have a group of studying, I guess practicing nurses that would come in, and they would help with health assessments, and they would put on a presentation, they would hold a health fair. I was thinking this might be that same program, so we, we've done that before with MSU.
Well, if there's, I mean, that sounds like another, a, a, a good option for our Senior Center.
Yep.
So if there's, I can support that.
We've done that, I think, two or three times, so.
Okay, is there any other question?
No.
Trustee Benzi?
I don't have any trouble carrying with these recommendations at all. That's just my personal opinion. How soon would you be ready to go with this, if we approved it?
If, if I have your support, we would begin immediately.
Okay.
By Wednesday, many of these would be implemented.
Because that's under items for discussion and introduction, it wouldn't be for the two weeks, your next, what is, actual room?
Not, not, not hearing any, not hearing any, anyone speaking against these, I would probably begin implementing them Wednesday. I mean, a lot of them Wednesday.
Then it should have been under items for action.
I can do these without, I mean, I can do these without board support. I, I'm hearing board support.
No, I understand that.
I don't need a formal action, is what I'm saying. I, I could begin, I could begin in these immediately.
Right.
I, I was more or less trying to see if I had, yeah.
For us to be able to do that, we need to have it on something else.
Making sure it had gone far enough. If, if, if someone had indicated this doesn't go as far as I thought it would, or we wanted more, or we wanted this or that, I would certainly add that to the list. So, but I can begin immediately.
I mean, I would say that we have an ideal state where all of our vulnerable populations are protected as much as possible. I know there's sensitivity to that, and I think this is a good first step in doing what we can to protect our seniors. So I don't want this to preclude the consideration of the possibility of a vaccine mandate.
Okay.
So I want to keep that in the back of our minds while we monitor the situation with the Delta variant and where things are in terms of transmission rates in our county.
Okay.
But I think this has been an earnest and good first step.
Thank you. Okay.
My only question with it, and I go along with what Trustee Elmeri is saying, except that I'm not seeing anything here for those who are attending who aren't vaccinated. So is there anything that's going to be done other than these requirements? That everybody's going to wash their hands, everybody's going to have temperature taken, everybody's going to do-
This applies to everyone.
Okay.
Yep. Everyone's wearing masks right now regardless of vaccination standards.
No, I understand that.
So, right, it's my intention that it would apply to everyone equally. If you come to the center, these will apply to you.
Okay. And they'll know that?
I will let them know.
Okay.
I'll be there Wednesday to let them know we've, we've implemented additional safety-
So this would be posted, so that-
I can certainly make a copy for everyone out there too, if they wanted it. So.
Because that would be my concern, that everybody doesn't understand, we're all in the same boat, we're all doing the same-
No, when I've gone out and communicated with them, I, I communicate with everyone via microphone and, and have that conversation with all of them.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on C, the 2022 draft budget update.
I provided to you all a new copy. I hope it's large enough, I hope it's dark enough, I hope it's big enough. I've added page numbers. As I indicated in the memo, nothing in the 2022 requested line and nothing in the 2022 recommended budget has changed. Those numbers are all the same. What may have changed is the 2021 activity through 12/31/21, because we did make expenditures and did receive additional tax funds during the time since our last meeting.
So Karen, did you put that in my mailbox?
It is. It should be in your mailbox.
Okay. There is one in there, so.
Well, we will make you one.
I was going to say, mine wasn't in the mailbox, it was along the side because they were afraid to fold it.
Probably too large.
So it'd be too large to put in.
If there isn't one, Joe will make you one.
Okay.
Yep, we'll make sure.
Yeah, you should, wouldn't you?
We will. It's even got the, it's even got the rose.
So it'll have your name on it.
Page numbers and page numbers. Oh, God, when you see it, it's, that's great.
It'll work.
So I didn't, it, it's your pleasure whether we go through some pages tonight. Taylor did send out an email asking for your availability over the next two weeks to hold some meetings to go through the budget specifically. But if it were the inclination of this board tonight, we could certainly do a little bit of work on it. That's completely up to this group.
Who's first?
You were, you were first.
Mine's simple, too.
Trustee Benzi, so go ahead.
I prefer to wait till the rest of the trustees are here. I prefer to wait till the rest of the trustees are here.
Okay.
Okay, they're not here this evening, so.
Sure, thank you.
That would, I would prefer.
We can certainly do that.
Trustee Almarie.
I'd prefer to wait as well.
All right. Now the public too will be notified when we're meeting so that.
Of course.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be posted on the website, posted on the front of the building and, yep.
Okay, just so everybody understands that.
And should be livestreamed too, just like we do these meetings.
If they come in and request a copy of it, can we have the copy?
We would certainly make them a copy of it.
Okay, that's.
It, it, it's easier, the only thing I'll say is it's because these are such large pages, they take time to feed through. If someone were to call and ask for a copy, we could make it and it could be waiting when they got here.
Okay.
If they come in and stand, they're going to have to wait twenty minutes maybe. The copy just takes a minute to do its work, so.
Nope, makes sense.
Yep, but we'd be happy to make anybody a copy.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Items for action. Bea Zinboy, recreation coordinator position. That also is for superintendent.
Yep, thank you. This is coming back to you. As it was presented to you prior, there were some questions in the past, specifically trustee Almarie and I believe trustee Fuenz Bliss had asked for some more work to be done on an overreaching, like strategy of how this would fit into a larger picture of oversight and, and community outreach. To be honest, that work, I feel at this time cannot be done. We have the budget in front of us and I know that we're being asked for a couple of staffing positions in both the police and fire department. I don't know that where that'll take this budget, so I have stopped work on looking at the restructuring of the departments, that department specifically in the senior center because of that fact. That, of course, is your pleasure whether or not that work continues. But what I am seeing right now is I, I, staff is really at a lack of being able to get the farmer's market. We've, we've had volunteers, trustee Almarie and two of our staffers have both helped us in staffing the farmer's market. And recreation programs have been handled by all the ladies in the front office in addition to deputy superintendent Reeves. And it's becoming a lot for them to keep up with and we're not doing anything additional. Trunk or treat is coming and we've not even made any plans for that. And at this point, we should be publicizing something like that. So I, I feel like we're doing a disservice by leaving this position empty. But of course, I, I do know that other requests have been made for additional work.
That was my question I had when I looked at this. So there is no farmer's market?
This is for recreation and farmer's market.
No, I understand that, but there is no farmer's market supervisor.
Manager.
Manager, market manager.
He, he was done at the end of August and has moved to another state now.
No, I understood that. So we're not filling, the farmer's market's not filling that.
Condensing this position and that, that position into this position.
Oh, well, no wonder it's running into some issues because nobody's there to, okay, got it. So what happens then to the farmer's market between now and the time?
We would, if this were to not be passed or not passed, obviously you can't hire someone immediately.
Right.
We would continue to staff with, I'm assuming the three people that have been assisting us to this point will continue to assist us and that commitment's been made by trustee Almarie. But it's, it's becoming a lot for everyone.
Sure.
But there's, I believe he said today, seven more markets before the end of the, of the end of the year for that, for the market.
So what that means, if, if, this is because there's no one there, you're taking the place of the farmer market manager? Okay.
Just on those four hours on Thursdays when I do it. The pay sucks though, I can tell you.
That's because you make big bucks other places. When you do this with that four hours that you're there, who then calls them to remind them or looks for new vendors or is that what you do or is that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
My understanding is that Adam Montre, the chair of the farmer's market committee is doing that legwork.
Oh, okay, so Adam's the one that's.
And usually the vendors sign up through, through the year. Most of them that come, come every time, or every week, I should say, through, through the season. So usually you're already, you already have everyone signed up and people are coming.
Usually the manager looks for new vendors to come in. But that's not, is that what Adam's doing?
It's probably what Adam is, he's, he's also been assisting the people that have been working in that position temporarily to make sure they're set up and they're, they, if they need any help, he's, he's right there to help them, so he's been.
Adam's right there.
Adam, yes. Yep, he's the chair of the committee as well as a farm owner and a vendor.
Nope, I understand that. I just didn't know who was, who was taking the place of the manager. So the dollars that, the dollars that are in the budget for farmer's market was actually for the manager. So if the manager's not there, is that prorated? Is that what, we're going to wait until?
No, well, we, we're paying staff obviously when they come and work.
They're not paying me.
Just asking.
It's still coming out of that line, but it's, it's only the four hours a week instead of the fifteen hours a week that that person, that, that, previously Tom Straka was working.
Right, okay. Go ahead, trustee.
Okay.
Bensy, go ahead.
So basically, this really isn't ready tonight. So if we don't take any action on this, we can kind of delay this until we get into the other staffing positions in the budget that we're going to be working on in the next couple of weeks.
Correct. I, I, I have some concerns about that. I, we've, we've had concerns, I mean, both of these positions, especially the farmer's market is a financial position and, and having that spread among three people that are not, and I, I'm sorry, not properly trained, do not normally handle money for the township, it's, it's, it's probably not the best practice at this point for us to be handling it like we're handling it. So there are concerns about that.
Okay. For actions, then there really is no action. We'll take the vote, but it says item for action, so we'll need to call the vote. Go ahead.
Good question. What do you do?
Your second, he's first.
So there's no motion on table or a second, so.
No.
Let's not take a vote right now. But I do want to keep this conversation going because I, I am sensitive to the township staff being spread thin and the stressors that come with that.
Oh, you have a question?
Yep.
I also believe that it's premature to, you know, accept this. But I'm wondering, and, and having taken a very close look at the Parks and Rec and farmer's market budgets as well as senior services budgets and, you know, other budgets, you know, I, I just want to explore whether or not there's an opportunity for us to move forward on this position, but then address some of our concerns through the budget, budgeting process.
So you don't want an action?
No, I, I'm, where I'm moving is that I, we're trying to put out some fires without giving up.
Sure.
The conversation on how we want to structure.
I, I still believe this restructuring needs to occur. I just, I just truly believe that right now things need to be staffed, need to be settled down and that the finances need to be handled with the most, you know, consistency and correctness according to our, our procedures. So I, I, certainly it's up to you if you would like to adopt it. I'm sorry, I took it, Steve. Adopt it and then change it. I'm open to that if that's this board's wish.
Treasurer Wissflosser, your turn.
I'm sorry, Steve.
You're fine, don't be sorry about it. The, the, this is a bit of a problem financially because of the nature of what farmer's market does and what they have access to and what we do. We take credit card payments. We have banking, we have double up food bucks, we have tokens, we have all kinds of things. It's money that has to be in its audit. And in order to take and put up, to help this thing so that we're all get along a little better, well, we're going to have Aaron Stevens in here tomorrow morning from Maynard Casterson, who's our lead accounting firm. And we're going to write a review policy for this and one other department in here, which will show that we are being proactive and we are taking and taking a step. And we're going to, this policy is going to be, basically it's an internal control policy for this situation so that the people that are going to be doing it, whether it's temporary, part-time or whatever, so we have a process of checks and balances so that we know how much money we have every week, how much money we got at the end of the week, or where we're at with this, and we know what, what transactions have been made. Now you can ask, you can say, well, don't you know that? No, not necessarily. And so that's the best way to make myself happy. I tend to get a little grumpy when that doesn't happen because I, I like having good audits and I don't want to see the township have a written up on something for, silly. And that's what this is. And we have one other department, we're going to do the same thing with, and that's building and zoning. We have the same issue there. There's no means, no way. Them two ladies fault over there. They, they take my girl off, I, I give it to them, but it's not, it's not their fault where we're at. You just have had so many changes in here and so many things going on that you, you can't keep up with everything and that's what my job is. When it gets to the point where it don't work, I say, whoa, or stop. And, and we, that's what we do. But that's, this is a tool we have with having Maynard for accounting tech people. That's what we use them people for. And they're going to come in, they're going to write us a review policy. And if there is a question, if they was to pull a paperwork for the day that the market was done with one of the extras being done, like yourself or somebody else, when you say this is our policy, this is what we did, you can, you can make a mistake, but as long as you correct it, you're fine. And that's what we're going to do here tomorrow. I don't see, I, I guess, I, I read this thing and I, and I'm not laughing at it, that the guy you had here before, it was the last guy that was here, everybody you had here had been a wonderful, did a wonderful job as a market manager, but Tom is going to be very hard to follow his footsteps. I mean, he's, he was a stand-up guy and he was just a, he was, he was all over everything. But I, I don't, I don't understand why we can't move forward and do something. But I, I don't know if you've got somebody, you don't, I never even asked that question.
No, there's, no. What I was asking for tonight was the ability to move forward in post and that's why I said I'm open to those modifications if, if that's what you all agree to.
Oh, is that what, okay. Go ahead. So trustee Almarie.
Well, I, treasurer Wissflosser, I, I appreciate the, the financial controls and everything that you, that you keep a close eye on and I, I do think that there's some balance between having those in place, but also facilitating supports and assets for the community that are accessible and operational. And so I, I hope that's what is developed is, does not put barriers to.
No.
Moving forward. I'm not saying that it is, but.
I'll tell you exactly what, what the process is going to be. The process is going to be, you're no longer going to have the superintendent's office counting money and, and, and cashing in, cashing out and doing everything. It's going to get done by the deputy treasurer, just as everybody, every other piece of money is in this place. And then it's going to be a copy of, so I'm only going to get done there. We're going to have what we call a transmittal sheet and it's going to be part of my deck sheet that wraps up at the end of the day each day and it's going to be right there in black and white what it is. And I'm going to have a copy of it where you don't have that now. And it doesn't matter whether you do it, Joe does it, Marie does it, two ladies in the front row does it, whoever, it's, that's the way it's going to be done. But keep in mind, this clover machine that you got, you carry around, that you use when you do that, that has all the account information and everything in it for the trust and agency fund because that's where this stuff is all run through. This thing, this fund has $150,000 in it most months, has all the access as well as the fees and, and everything that's, that goes with this thing because it, it covers many different programs we have here. That's $150,000, goes to many different programs. But I mean, but the, the fees and everything, it gets charged to that since it is a trust and agency escrow account, that's what trust and agency means, gets charged back to the general fund. And then numbers are in, in there as well because that's where all the fees go. So I get a little bit protective of that. I gotta pay attention to who's got access to that. Now I got, I got 100% knowledge of what goes on there. I can just turn my computer on, I can tell you exactly, who did the transactions, what they did and everything else, but that's still, when the people who are looking in the window, the auditors at us and they go and they ask you to pull the information on a daily basis and they say, we want to see the receipts and supporting documentation. If you don't have it, you won't be getting the audits you're getting in here in the last five years. You're going to get a different audit. And I, I don't, I'm not interested now.
So everything that you've explained, how does that interface with the job description and responsibilities of?
That's fine.
Okay.
So. In fact, I frankly, honestly, I, and I, I don't know why, maybe everybody here can probably tell me it's because I don't understand, but I, I find it, I find it a little bit stringent that the requirements of this job includes a bachelor's degree. I, I, I find that hard to believe this day and age with the way the employment is and how many people there is looking for work and everything. I, I find that hard to believe. We need to have somebody with a bachelor's degree to, to actually do this program. And that worries me because that, I think you're probably missing out on some good candidates. I'm not saying there isn't anything wrong with somebody with a bachelor's degree, but there's a lot of people out there that can do a job and they don't necessarily have to have a bachelor's degree.
So what I would offer, I, I, I think my concern is less with the farmer's market and it's more with parks and recreation. I, I can, there's an argument that can go both ways in terms of a set of qualifications. I completely agree with you. I don't know if education provides exactly what you would want in a person, but it is an indicator of someone who may, if, if we're looking for someone who has training on recreation activities and delivery and design of parks and recreation, you can identify people who have degrees in that specific field, which gives you an indication that maybe they have some qualifications that we're looking for. Again, I'm not saying that ecology education is the only way of gathering, you know, gaining those, those skills. And so I, I could care less if it, if there's, you know, the requirement of a bachelor's degree versus a qualified set of experiences and skills that can meet the needs of our community in terms of parks and recreation. My concern is, you know, when I look at our budgets, I see 0% change in programs that are offered to Parks and Rec on the 2022 budget. I think that we have underserved our population in terms of the parks and recreation activities that we've offered in the past. And that's my personal opinion and I'd like to see that improve and increase. And the reason I've been advocating for taking a close look at this and involving community input in this and committee member input in this is that I, I see we have an opportunity for restructuring that can fundamentally change how we provide recreational activities for our community. And so that, that's my only stance on this. Now, I will go back to, you know, addressing what is, I think, a critical need of staffing to just do the work that needs to get done right now. And so I'm okay moving this forward, but I want to have some assurances that we're going to take serious the delivery and design of recreation activities for our youth and our families above and beyond T-ball and, you know, the four things that are listed on the budget. So that's where I stand on this.
Okay, just, just from my standpoint, so these items for action that it's under, it's only to move forward with what you have here?
What I'm saying is, is that I'm open to, if you desire to approve this.
No, I understand.
But if you later desire while we're working through the budget process or the planning process for the upcoming, the next year, if you say that you want to change something, I'm also open to having that conversation if that's what this board wants.
So they'd have to come back to it?
Potentially.
Yes, okay.
Like he said, if, if it's, if he wants more of this than that, then, then we may need to change something that's contained within this, this job description.
So the item for action is only to move this forward or?
You're going to approve it.
To approve it.
I'm saying I will bring it back if that's what this board wants.
And then you'd have to bring it back.
Yes.
So. So it's not an introduction for discussion, you have to vote on it. This is an item for action.
We don't have to vote on it.
Well, this is something.
It's something we could vote on and I, I've got something to say.
It's something we could vote on, and I've got something to say.
Okay, no, I understand. That's what she was trying to answer, what my question. So, yes, trustee Benzi.
I really enjoy everybody and the conversation. And I'm listening to everybody, but we're not quite ready with this one yet. It's kinda like, we're gonna make the soup, but we haven't put all the ingredients in it to make the soup yet.
Yep, that's a good analogy.
We're just not quite, quite ready with that. We're not quite ready with the money. And, you know, in a couple of weeks, we really could be. You know? So we have a choice. If we go forward with this, we're gonna fix it on the fly, so to speak, okay? If we postpone this for a couple of weeks, we can fix it, and it'll be more right when we approve it, in my mind. It'll have met with the auditors, let the money thing figured out. So that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at on it. I don't see a real rush to judgment this evening on this issue.
Can I correct one thing?
Sure.
We're not gonna meet with the auditors, we're gonna meet with the accountant.
I'm sorry. There is a difference. Go ahead, Brecha. Our clerk has a question.
I just, I don't know what else we're gonna change, but little things. But we do have an election, and the two people that you have working are helping me with elections. And we've been getting a lot of absentee ballot applications back. So we might be limited on staff unless Jason wants to do it every week.
And that's just the farmers' market side?
Yeah, just the farmers' market side.
Items for action isn't necessarily where that needed to be. It needed to be for discussion, right? Is that because you don't wanna take an action on it? Am I understanding?
It's been introduced several times, so, yeah, I, I put it there. You don't have to take an action on it.
Because it says, you know, what's under items for actions, but we're looking to not do anything. You're gonna wait and let it kind of play out.
That's an action.
Am I understanding? That is an action. To wait and let it play out, I get it, but it's not, is that what, am I understanding what everybody is saying?
Is there a possibility, I mean, you currently have two part-time positions you could hire within, right?
Yeah, I could hire a 32-hour-a-week Parks and Recreation person, and I could hire a 15-hour-a-week Farmers' Market position.
I mean, obviously, you don't wanna do that in terms of-
No, I mean, if I, if I hire someone that wants, I mean, there's, there's, there's two very different people that you, you're either gonna hire someone that wants a full-time job, that has this set of expertise, or I'm gonna hire two part-time people that I may have to let go in a matter of months because we've, we've decided to go full-time.
So what's the scope of work on the park side? What's left to be done remainder of this season?
There is usually a truck-or-treat at this point. There's basketball. There's usually something around the holidays.
Buck pool?
Buck pool. I mean, most of those are, most of those, when our former recreation person was here, were planned months ago and ready to rock, but.
Zumba yoga?
Zumba yoga, yeah. There's, there's several things, but I, just trying to highlight the big things would be, you know, buck pool, truck-or-treat, basketball, a holiday event of some type.
Whatever the committee would bring to them, don't the committee bring them stuff all the time?
So our action tonight is no action, correct?
We're still discussing, I believe.
No, not.
Yeah, we're still, we're still discussing it. That's, that's my tendency, there's no action tonight, but.
Okay, well, that's what I thought you said, so apparently, trustee Almarigi, is there more that you need to?
Well, I'm torn. I'm torn between meeting the staffing needs of township, and I'm torn in that I don't wanna give up an opportunity to really plan through and make solid decisions on what this position could look like, and what we can afford. Because what if we go through the budgeting process and between the hiring of police officers and firemen, we see that, well, maybe we can't actually afford a full-time position.
So the action is no action. You wanna put this aside and wait until things kind of play out, whether it be the budget, whether it be the audit from the accountant?
Not the audit, no.
Now, that's true. I said, I said two different things there. But if that's, because there isn't any decision, I don't know of any decision you can make, because those are all unknowns.
Well, we could authorize what's in front of us, so that Karen could move forward to hire someone. I would, I would ask if we do that, that you cajole someone who is overqualified for the current position.
So the thing is, is that for the next two weeks to three weeks, this position is gonna be up on Indeed and in papers and online, and we're just gonna be receiving applications.
And, well, what's your, what's the application review process gonna look like, and hiring committee gonna look like for this position?
I would probably bring in, I know there's not a chair at this time of Parks and Rec. It could be, I have the board liaisons to both of those groups, and add a mantra, invite them in to review what I deem as maybe the top 10, five to 10, narrow the process down to the candidates you're interested in interviewing, and then start setting up interviews. So that would be, you know, within a week or two after the posting process.
I would feel comf-, sorry.
Me?
I didn't raise my hand, sorry.
You're still in the process.
I really like the direction this is going in. If you hire somebody that has a degree in parks and recreation, that would open up a whole new world around here, if you hired a degree person to do that. And there are people out there that major in parks and recreation. Okay? But I don't know if it's something that I have to do in the next three weeks, Karen, while I'm in the middle of this budget process. I would really like to get the best person I can when I go this way. I really would, and I'm right in the budget process. And I guess I'll just throw it out there for the way it is. I have a request in this budget process, several actually, that equate out to about $4 million worth of support in the next 10 years. And I'm really struggling with that number, because that's a big number. Okay, especially coming out of a pandemic like this, and, you know, all the economic constraints we have. So I really would like to put a hold on this for a couple of weeks, just to maybe get it a little bit more refined before we move forward. Because I would also be comfortable in hiring somebody that didn't have a degree, if they had a lot of experience, because you don't have to have a degree to do this job.
Okay, I, I am, I, I understand you, and I'm going to say that in, I'm willing to go through that process with all of you, but there will probably be no buck pool. There probably will be no truck-or-treat sponsored by the township, and there probably, whatever holiday item there might be, there probably will be no holiday item. We will probably eke by on getting a basketball program together like we did flag football, but I can't, I can't even commit to the other three community events that would normally occur without a person in place.
Trustee Almarigi, can I?
If you were to agree to form a committee of representatives from both committees that would support the township through the advertisement of the position, the review of applications, the creation of a application process, and then implementation of that process, I would feel comfortable moving forward with this.
Is that in motion?
Oh, you know?
Thank you.
Well, I, I, is that an acceptable? I mean, what I'm hearing is that we're understaffed, and we could leverage our committee members to build capacity. Okay. So that, that is in motion.
So that amends what she originally?
No, I, I don't think there's a process part written within this, so.
There isn't, it's just a job description.
It's a job description, so you're amending to form a committee before you do this.
I, I'm moving to authorize the supervisor, authorization of the job, the creation of a new job, dependent upon the contingencies of the process outlined previously.
Supervisor or the superintendent?
I'm sorry?
Supervisor or the superintendent?
What did you say?
You said supervisor.
I don't know what I said. Superintendent.
Okay, that works.
Did you get the motion?
I think so.
I hope so, because.
Okay, and then did you second it, Joe, or?
Joe always seconds.
No, I didn't second it.
No, that's what she was asking.
But I will second it.
Okay.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
No.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes?
Okay, we have three yeses and two nos, so the motion passes. And does that also, and this is a question I'm gonna have-
I have a preliminary question.
Is that the question that passes this?
Does it, does it need four yes votes to pass?
It needs a quorum of those present.
Quorum of the present majority of-
So it's just three?
You have to get it.
Three yes votes passes it?
Yes.
Okay.
By those that are sitting and voting.
That'll be a question people will ask.
No, it's, as long as you get a quorum. Okay, so it's going to move forward with the amendment that I hope our clerk has written down. So we go on to 14, which is new business, item for introductions, the Webster Road design.
Thank you. So you are all aware, you were instrumental in assisting with the creation of a Webster Road Committee that has the participation, membership, excuse me, of people from Planning Commission, representatives from the road committee, as well as representatives from other areas of the township. We have a former DDA member that's very interested in the downtown area, as well as a member of the Public Art Committee. They have been meeting since approximately March of 2021 and discussing the Webster Road, what I like to call the corridor, which goes from the northmost I-69 on-ramp exit to Clark Road. So, based on what they have been talking about, and in addition to the fact that we have qualified for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, which is referred to as a TAP grant, excuse me, TAP grant, we are looking at adding a, call it a transportation alternative, but it's, it's a sidewalk, a path that will run down what is, you'll see a presentation on that at the next meeting from that group. In addition to that, this board will also be seeing some options for the layout of Webster Road that will involve, in one section, it's essentially striping its paint and can be changed if, in the next year, you decided that you wanted to change that plan after we received some public input. I know this seems a little backwards, but because this is a federal grant and the road commission is applying for that money, we have to wait and find out if we've been accepted for the grant before we go out and take public input for the grant. So, it, I know it seems backwards, but it's, unfortunately, it's the way that the process works. So, at the next board meeting, you will see some graphics that will be presented to you by both Mark Trotter, who's the engineer at the Clinton County Road Commission, and Matt Wendling, who's chairing up the Webster Road Committee. One of the ideas that you're going to see is for Drumheller North to Clark Road, you are going to be asked to potentially eliminate the left turn lane. And again, that, it will be your decision. It's, that's not a done deal, but this is what's being, what would, excuse me, will be recommended to you by that group, and you'll need to make a decision whether you are going to adopt that plan or you're going to reject that plan and leave it as it is. So, the one option is to eliminate the left turn lane and take the road down from three lanes to two, and then adding a bike path on both sides of the road. And like I said, that is paint and can be changed. The second will be from Drumheller South to I-69. The idea is to convert the south section from Drumheller to I-69 to add a left turn lane, increasing the road in this section from two lanes to three lanes. If you chose to widen the road, it would include two four-foot bike lanes. And then, or it can accommodate three traffic lanes with no bike lanes. So you'll have to determine whether you want to do one or the other, but we cannot accommodate both. Jason, sorry, trustee Almarigi.
Do we have any idea how many bicyclists or use, ride down Webster Road?
I don't think that we do at this time. I don't think there's an official count. I think we could obtain a count with some traffic study, and I believe even the Tri-County Bicycle Association may have some data on that, or may be able to undertake a study of that. But we don't have that at this time. I think the idea was, is that the bike lanes carry from Park Lake up through over the bridge, and then they essentially are non-existent. And so, where do they ride, or where do they, you know, they're squeezed to the side of the road or off the road potentially, so. So, those will actually be given to you next time. In a presentation, you'll have graphics that you'll be able to see at that time. But you will be asked to make those decisions. One positive note that's come out of this is that the Clinton County Road Commission has increased the amount of their project request. That originally was about $300,000 to $450,000. And that includes an additional depth of mill and fill, which is positive for the road, Webster Road. It's goes a little deeper, hopefully it lasts a little longer. So, we're, we're hoping that that will help us. In addition, there will be some guardrail replacement. And then between Drumheller and Clark Road, there's some significant deteriorated curb that will be, curb and gutter that will be replaced. So, that, that is a positive, that additional dollars will be coming to this community for, to help us with the fix of this road. So, funding confirmation is not expected by the Clinton County Road Commission until June 2022, and that's what I was talking about, the process being kind of backward. So, at the time, the township would be selected, especially for the TAP grant and finalizing the road layout. We would hold some public hearings, or you could do surveys, you could do that and more. It would, it would be up to this board how we conduct public input. And then we would have to finalize those and have those engineered. So, this is, this is your warning that big things are coming, and decisions will need to be made.
So, just to clarify, you will seek public input after we land on a plan?
We have to be, well, so you'll, you'll, you'll form a selection. You'll be chosen for the project, and as you collect public input, your project plan could change, so you're not sealed in- So you're not sealed in, in stone at the point at which you make that, that commitment.
And when do we need to have a, a, a choice?
So you'll see it at this next meeting. You can make it at that meeting, or you could choose to make it at the following October, the second meeting in October.
But it, it has to be done by the end of October?
Yes, our, our, our deadline is closing for submitting for the projects.
Any other questions?
I think people need to understand that even at the end of October, it's still gonna be a working draft.
Yes.
And it's subject to change.
Yes.
Okay, but you have to have your draft in by then.
Yeah.
They are doing exactly what they're supposed to do. They're looking to see if we can get more money for this project. And they represent us, and they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. So if the project changes, there will be more time for public income in the future.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Been very patient.
I heard a lot of these, but I heard only.
We're gonna go to B, under fourteen, which is the Taco Bell plant site. So Tim, you're on.
You're wel, yeah, you're welcome to take the podium.
This Kraus, is it?
Okay.
Yeah, so I represent, I'm the director of facilities for a franchisee, and you know, we're Michigan-based company, right? We're working to build twenty-two hundred square foot mobile pickup, double driveline, Taco Bell and Meyer Allo. We're excited to come here, we visit the freezer and had great success, and one of our highest line stores in our system. And Meyer Michigan State contractor, so, you know, it's, I've been doing this for planes and my beers and try to do it for longer, so.
Is there any questions?
I have one.
Did you get an opportunity to look through? Okay, go ahead. Trustee Benzi.
What's your start date? When do you wanna build?
Well, we do, I have it done this year, but that's not gonna happen. But we'll probably have to, since, hey, if I let me get a building permit and add, we're probably gonna have to kick it off in, you know, spring, early spring of next year because of frost.
Okay, so your bill dates next spring? Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All that? Sorry about that.
Thank you. Can you spell your last name for us, please?
Staff, not for them, but for staff.
Oh, all right.
And the Planning Commission Minister talked about the fact that Schuma is gonna deal with potential leak that pelvis and lateral parts.
Yes.
How long has there been a potential leak over there? What are we talking about?
I, I am, I am not aware of how long there's been a potential leak. When they went to, when they approached is when that was discovered. And I don't know if that's when the staff at Schuma had gone over there and, and taken a look. But when that became obvious, the Taco Bell group of engineers asked that they could be part of that process to take a look at what is occurring under the ground. So I, I can't give you a, a hard answer as to how long.
We haven't been told of anything in my brief period on, from February till, I believe it was the last month. On the authority, I'd never heard of anything that was any action on that order. So it's interesting that that's in the, it's in the minutes here. So obviously, somebody at the Planning Commission was pulled that. The other thing, question I got is, is in respect to our residential equivalent, you know, it's RRU's, we're down to three hundred, how does this affect that? And has this been, been specked out from Schuma or from somebody as far as whether, what it's gonna take for RRU's and industrial pretreatment or anything else?
It has, they, they have been involved in the process, but I do not think the RRU's have been calculated at this time.
Any other questions? You're good. Thank you. Oh, it's K.
Thank you.
I gotta see.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay.
IPP you asked about? I'm sorry, Maria.
Yeah, industrial pretreatment. Because anything that's got grease in it that goes out of the system in the way of the system, that's additional charge for IPP. There's nothing valuation for that, and we need to stay on that as we think we do RRU's.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
All right. All right, now the next, we have C, which is the gardener law. Is that the FOIA request?
I'll let Karen take this one.
Yep, I'm sorry, let me find my paperwork. We received a FOIA request, an original request that Brenda, Clerk Chandler, and I both processed. And then we have received this documentation that is appealing that request. According to our legal counsel, we need to, appeals are handled much differently than the original FOIA. And we need to receive this document so that we can formulate a response and then approve that response at our next meeting. So this is a formal action of receiving the document so that it can be examined and a response can be formulated.
So what you're saying is this is, this is the actual request, FOIA request. Then they didn't agree with the answer.
They said there's, there's.
So they're now going to appeal it.
Yes, they're saying there's more, and we want the additional documents. And so we need to receive this so that we can then respond to them. Because appeals go to, are, are, are handled by the Board of Trustees.
Correct. No, that's what I, I wasn't sure where it went. So they, they disagreed with the information they were given, or it wasn't enough. Like you said, there were supposed to be more, it wasn't there. So now they're going to an appeal.
Okay. So the only action you're taking is to receive this, and then you'll take another action at the next board meeting?
Right. Now, that's all, that's all this one, correct?
Yes.
So the one, okay.
You need a motion for that?
I do, a motion to receive.
Okay.
Just, and that's all, only because that's items under introduction, so that's all it is, is just.
No, this is an action. I need an action on this.
You're, you're farther down in the list.
Oh.
Oh, did I, I put it in the wrong place. I put it in fourteen, not B.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Nope, nope.
I probably contributed to that confusion.
You'd be sorry if I missed it. So both of them, you need actions, okay.
I'll make a motion to receive the FOIA appeal.
I'll second it. Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Elmeri Gi?
Yes.
I had them written backwards, I'm sorry.
No, that was, that was me, I put it under items for introduction, so that was mine.
Was the other item that was the Cousins Park?
Cousins Park.
Okay, so.
So we should have had, if, by doing that, I'm sorry, we should have had the community lease first, but go ahead.
Do, how do you wanna do them?
Well, we already started, so.
Okay, so go to the Cousins Park?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll feel my way in just a minute.
So I apologize that this was not included in your packet. It, I, I did not understand that additional items had been taken care of to bring it to you. So that is, that's my, was my misunderstanding. So Benzieb, our Parks and Public Works Director, discovered that a tree in one of the four trees that are around the cupola in James Cousins Memorial Park was damaged and, in fact, rotting right down to the base of the tree. We called in a tree expert and to examine the tree. And his name was Mr. Steve Trobich. He believes that the tree had been hit by lightning some time ago and that it is just now starting to, it's, it's basically rotting from the inside out. And the base of the tree is rotten, it's split in the trunk, and it goes up about approximately thirty feet. Ben went to the school board and met with them and the Building and Grounds Committee in early September to discuss removing the tree. They agreed that due to the potential harm to the cupola, it could fall on the cupola and it could hurt a visitor to the park if it fell as well, that they supported removing the tree to protect life and safety. We have also notified the museum committee via an email to Chris Heggerman so that he could discuss that with them, and we've not heard anything additional back from them. It is here for you. If you disagree with removing the tree, you will need to take an action. If you do not disagree with it, by looking at the photos, it, we will, we will move forward with removing the tree, basically. But I wanted you all to be aware. I know that that park is held in high regard. Every, everything in that park is respected and loved, and I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the action that was going to be taken.
Any questions? When you said you talked to the museum committee, what was their thoughts with removing?
We, we, we informed Chris Heggerman via email, we heard nothing in return.
You haven't talked to the actual, okay, all right.
Well, he is part of the community.
He's part of the, you gotta worry, he's part of it, but he's not the whole. So I, I didn't understand. So Chris is the only one that you've talked to at this point?
He's the one that was communicated with, yes.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, great.
The only thing I would ask is, is that you get positive confirmation from the Chris and/or the museum committee that they're comfortable with that?
Yeah. I've even considered in, in doing that, that we even offer, I, I am not a person that woodworks, but I don't know if even something could be done with the wood special. So I'm going to kind of make that offer as well, that if there's something, somebody would like to do with the wood, that it be made available to them.
So what Trustee Elmeri Gi is saying, is it either or or both?
I, I, I hope they're one and the same, so that Chris would serve as the liaison too.
Okay.
And so I, I don't know if he chairs that.
Do they have a group of officers?
I always thought they did.
Okay.
I always thought they did.
I'll try to make contact with all of them.
I'll text Chris to see if he got your email.
Okay.
So the, the only other thing that I would wonder about is if we're gonna go in and do some tree work, if it makes sense to look at all of the pine trees there. And that, I guess that's something I'd wanna broach with the museum committee.
Okay.
And they may say, we're cool with, you know, the public safety issue, but we don't want to do anything with the rest of the trees at this point. But I do know that Chris is working with the museum committee on some Cousins Park improvement projects. And I really hope that we can work collaboratively with them.
Chris and I have discussed that.
Good.
So basically, what you're looking for is a vote on whether or not this is.
I, I don't hear anybody saying that they shouldn't do it.
Okay. Okay, so that's an information. Okay. Finally, community garden.
So in your packet, I had included information regarding the previous two community garden leases that we had with the Bath Improvement, Improvement Association. I heard from Mr. Watt, thank you for your communication. He sent the additional information that you had in front of you when you sat down tonight regarding the community garden. And I am here to inquire as to whether you would like to move forward with another lease with the group. If you are, if you vote to confirm that, we will draft a lease agreement. And then Mr. Watt can take it back to the Bath Improvement Association, and I will bring it to you for your consideration. And so this would ultimately be a two-step process for you. But the first decision is whether or not you want to continue to have a lease with the group.
Your motion?
I would move to continue the lease with the group for the time that we've agreed upon in the, help me out, Karen, in the email.
Three years?
Three years, yep.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Jason, did you add your hand up? Is that something you wanted to?
I, I just have some questions.
Okay, well, you're second, so we're good for questions.
Great. So there's a commercial, I mean, some sort of insurance policy here. Can you explain what, I wasn't quite sure if this fits with the community garden or if this was a part of a different.
It does fit with the community garden. There, the, the Greater Lansing Food Bank often provides an umbrella insurance policy for community gardens. So they're the ones that provide this to us, and we're named insured on this policy. So we, we required that as part of the lease, that they, they carry that insurance. And they actually, I believe, carry more than we even asked them to.
The, the other thing is, I, I appreciate Mr. Watt's letter. I, I'm wondering if there's a possibility to just learn a little bit more about some of the successes of the community garden, either from Mr. Watt or Mr. White?
I have information on the success of the garden?
Uh, yeah, in terms of how many community members participates, I, I, you know, I mean, are there any success stories? I.
Not sure what you're asking.
Well, I think it's fitted pretty well with this, and Will White, a main street garden volunteer. It's pretty well stated in the letter from Thrall, yeah. In eight years, hundreds of people involved, hundreds of pounds of produce, produce, vegetables, distributed to the, every year, to the senior center and to other agencies and individuals. So what was your question other than that?
Do you have any metrics or any specific examples?
Eight years, hundreds of pounds every year of produce donated, hundreds of citizens. Well, you want, you want all their names and addresses and phone numbers? I don't understand your question.
I, I, I see you don't understand it, but that's fine.
Have you been to the garden? Have you seen the garden, how successful it is? So have all the people that have commented about how pretty the flowers are and?
So I have been to the garden, I've not heard people come, I mean, this is the first piece of information that I've seen. But I'm not, all I'm asking is a little bit of information about its success so that we can all feel proud of it. And so speaking in generalities of hundreds of people, you know, that doesn't instill confidence.
Well, should I say thousands of people? Would that build your confidence? I don't understand. It's obviously successful if it was been donating for eight years, hundreds of pounds of produce to needy families and underserved, low-income people. And we've had hundreds of people contribute thousands and thousands of dollars. This was all explained to the previous two boards. If you'd like to go back and look at the minutes and all the other stuff that we presented. Would you like to add something to that, Earl?
How long has Maria been working with us?
Who?
Maria.
Maria, oh, five or six years.
Five or six years. I, I, she always came, came when I wasn't there. And she worked with other community gardens. And she is, she's been the one who has pushed the distribution of the excess produce. So thanks a lot that this year, the first time, I, they had watermelon and pumpkins. And however, we have had trouble with keeping the watermelon. How, that's a stolen.
Oh.
It was one to another gardener that we didn't know about.
Oh.
It's all, it lives right behind the garden, it's never been told to the groom or whatever.
If I may, I, I know at the time that you developed the concept, you had thought about, and I just don't know because I'm, I haven't kept touch with the garden. But at one time, you talked about letting people have a, kind of their own plot, to have their own garden. Is that something that you've done?
Yeah, that is how it works.
Good, okay, thank you.
So I have my plot, but there are other plots of just community.
Community plots, very nice.
The watermelon's not a community plot, is it?
Yes.
The watermelon on the community plot, yes, yeah, and so is the pumpkin.
Yeah, and I do know that the seniors at the center have appreciated your, your contributions. It's, it's always popular when you bring it in, so thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so we need a vote on whether or not to accept or reject the community on the lease for three years, is that correct? Okay, so we'll take a vote.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Challenger, yes, Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes. Well, I, I'm not sure if you noticed the request to change the end date of the lease to December 31st or not.
We, we can do that. We'll, we'll draft the lease, and I will be in touch with you gentlemen.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think that's it. We, do we need a vote for an adjournment?
No, we got superintendent report.
Oh, I'm sorry. After we went all through that, it was like, jeez. I'm on page three. I want to know. That's a good point. That's a good, alright, took care of B. Now, we're gonna do the superintendent's.
Thank you, I'll, I will try to be brief. We are still awaiting the Park Lake Equalite results. Those results that were promised to us by the end of the summer will assist us in understanding if that's, if we're having a geese problem or if we're having a different kind of problem. The conclusion that we've worked with is that it's a geese problem, and if that is confirmed, we will move ahead with applying for permits from the proper state agency so that we can have the geese relocated, and we will be bringing forward an ordinance for your review and approval, I should say consideration, about feeding of the geese, because that is an essential problem that we're having as well. But those will be items that will wait until we have those results back. As Brenda Butler-Challenger, our clerk, mentioned, we are in the midst of preparing for an election. There is a millage that will be appearing for the voters of this township in November. And so, we are ramping up in the office with postcards to consolidate precincts, and then the absent voter ballot applications are currently being processed, and then as the actual applications come back signed, we will begin processing those and distributing ballots when the time comes for those. I am looking forward to discussions during budget time. I am also looking forward to discussions with this board as we move forward with the American Rescue Plan funds. I had a good discussion tonight with trustee Almarigi, and I believe that it's, it's past time probably to have conversations with this board about what your goals and what your strategies will be, what your hope to accomplish, and over the next couple of years, as we move forward. I know that we deal with a lot of day-to-day items, and our meetings are filled, obviously, with very complex items at times, but it, it, it would help me a great deal and it would help staff a great deal if we heard the voice of the board and were able to take that voice and implement it. So, I look forward to having those conversations with you as well. I think those will take place throughout the budget process, throughout the discussions about the ARPA money, but I also think those will, will take place as standalone discussions as well. So, I look forward to those. I know they can be exhausting, and, but I think they'll be beneficial for all of us as we try to move this community forward. So, I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be thrilled to answer them.
I noticed that, I, I got an email on, we put the Vortex Manhole Project on hold back here.
Yes.
Is there a supply chain issue with that?
Um, there's not. What I was waiting for was a master sewer plan from our engineers.
Oh, I see.
And I, when, when that work should fall into, and in what order that work should be completed.
They did recommend us, though, that we do that.
They did, but I believe there are also some higher priority things that should be addressed prior to that.
So, there's, there's some changes coming from them?
Yes.
In their recommendation?
So, what I have asked Prime and Newhoff to put together is a sewer master plan with a CIP schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just looking forward to the budget discussions.
Thank you, me too.
Alright, now we'll go to sixteen, which is public comments, two, for public statements. Sure.
I'm Anne, I'm a senior member, and I set a role, and I wasn't going to have a comment, and then I was listening. I've been watching the readings about the department restructuring, and I'm still a little confused why you want to do it, but, you know, I'm just a layman, so I'm, I'm not sure. But, I did read the job descriptions, the job description, and I'm like, that looks like that needs to be two people, not one. That person is gonna get burned out. I know we used to have two people. I know Becky Goodwin worked her bones off to get our, get our Parks and Rec working well, program's good. I've been here thirty-five years. My kids have participated in the programs. I've participated in the program. You know, I don't know what we, we need to make it better, but I really think that you need to move on it. There's, the programs are suffering. I feel sorry for you guys. I'm working in a short-staffed kitchen and killing myself, so I understand working hard, and it's, it's self-frustrating. There are people that are planning a truck retreat, you know, like community members.
We saw that today, yep.
Truck retreat because no one's doing it in what you should, what I think the Parks and Rec should be doing, and I just, I really think you're wasting way too much time on this. That's my opinion, and, you know, I wish you, I, I guess I should have started coming a few weeks ago, but I didn't, and, you know, I, that's my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else? Public state?
I'll add to that.
Okay.
Good meeting. That's a great job. Just to add to, let's, I just wanna time off, it's, it's a timer. I, I do think that I saw on the community post today that there are individuals in the community that are stepping up and doing the company retreat, arranging it, asking businesses, asking for kind of names and numbers. So, that might be taken care of a little bit for you. I would suggest, though, that a lot of the neighbors idea of, and putting it out there to the community and saying, you know, look, we're, we're not gonna be frustrating this or this or this this year, so that people do, or understand it's not coming. And remember to take it upon themselves to, to do it like, like the buffalo. That's a great idea, and that should, you know, lead out these interventions, things go along with that, but maybe, maybe they have the same spots. But just maybe notify folks, and so they don't sneak up, and then all of a sudden they realize they don't have a place to go, there's nothing to do. Then I think that's a little bit, say, that will help them anyway, so, I think, were you trying?
Thank you, Mary. Anne, you have a part two?
I'm sorry. I just have something. Um, the garden, um, they came to us at the school this summer and brought produce for the, for the families.
Families.
Unfortunately, they didn't want this to be. And I was like, here, here, take some. I have recipes for the people.
I was gonna say, you need recipes.
So.
I thought you were bringing some course tonight.
I wanted to say that, too.
Okay.
They had brought food to the school to hand out to the people who were coming to get lunches, and it was, they, people did take that, some people did take it, and were very appreciative, thank you.
May I ask any question of you, Ms.? Out of curiosity, you're not locked down in a food service contract. You can accept outside donations of food in the schools?
I'm not sure. I'm not the one that you want to know that.
Can I, if, if I can, at the senior center, we offer it to be taken home.
Okay.
We don't use it to produce a meal. We allow people, we put it out by the door, and people are allowed to take it home.
I know they encourage parks and fields, but I'm not sure how that works. Did you stay in a food house? And they would bring us produce when they had it, and we would try to use it, so I don't, yeah, I don't know if we could use theirs or?
You're getting ready to throw a food jar there on the rest of the road, probably on the east up there, and it always goes within a day or two, you know?
I just, I, I just think it's great that, you know, that community garden can go to the schools and the senior services center. So, I, I know that sometimes K-12, you know, food systems are locked down, and so, as much as-
I mean, they just brought us a lot, so here, so when we were giving the lunches and things like that, they were like, hey, I want a zucchini. So.
No. That's great, that's great, thank you.
That's okay.
Is there anybody else? Alright, we're good. We're on seventeen then, which is board member comments. Trustee Almarigi?
Um, I just, I, I want a response, I just, I want to make sure that, we did move on the Parks and Rec position, so, I, this superintendent has approved to move forward retiring someone. And so, but in terms of Ms. Ritchie's comments, you know, being more proactive and, and seeking volunteers is always, I mean, I, I think we have so much goodwill in our community that we can make these things happen with a little bit of coordination.
I agree.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Benzie?
I'm all set tonight, thanks.
Um, I voted no for the Parks and Rec type thing, what you had for motion tonight. It doesn't have any reflect on how I feel about recreation. Incidentally, we keep saying Parks and Rec, it's not Parks anymore. The four trustees made that vote. And they changed that several meetings ago and went to a Parks, separate from the recreation. So, your recreation director, I've got no problems with people wanting to have more programs and whatnot. I think that's only smart. I think that's the recreation board's decision to decide just what kind of programs they want, because that's what their job description is for doing that. With the farmer's market, I go back to the senior center. The senior center is not broke. If I can show you paperwork every day that that's working fine, that young lady over there is doing one heck of a job. She fills out her paperwork, it's transmittal, it's transparent, everything's there, money in, money out, everything's good. The farmer's market is definitely not broke. You're trying to fix something here, it doesn't need fixing. The farmer's market has, has been successful for the last two years and, and survived with money that they'd had by taking good care of their funds and doing a good job. And they didn't even have a fundraiser last year, and they're not gonna have one this year. So, there's nothing wrong with farmer's market, and it doesn't need to be broke. You just need to find somebody who's willing to take and put in the odd hours and be the farmer's market manager and do everything that what Marie talked about as far as calling people and do what the job needs. I don't see where them two positions go together. Hopefully tomorrow, we're gonna straighten out the financial pieces of that so we can make that a little bit simpler going forward. They, they have a short window here that's left. There ain't very much time left in their season. I hope that they go back to being open in the winter and at the community center. I don't, that'll be their decision, the board's decision, the farmer's market board's decision to decide whether they wanna do that.
Not this year.
But, but I hope, I hope they get back to doing that. I think that's something that's good. But that was my reason why I voted no. I think we need to untie the hands of the superintendent. I think you need to untie the hands of these committees. I think you need to let these people get out, and you need to hire some people and put people back to work. There isn't nobody who wants to go to work. There is nobody to hire. In a lot of places, there's people, they, they can't even fill jobs. Just hundreds of, hundreds of jobs that are out there that they can't get, find people to go to work, so I think you need to get proactive about doing that. And if you remember right, the four trustees, several weeks ago, that's what the, the reason why they based their vote on doing everything they did and giving the raises to the people, not that they didn't deserve it, with changing the structure, what they wanted to change. That's what they based their vote on, or at least a couple of them, that they voiced their opinion. So, I think you ought to do it for, for the whole thing here, and you ought to unleash the superintendent and let her hire some people and get this place back to, to working and get normal, a normal seat, dealing with the same people and let them learn, let them figure out what's, what, how their job has to be done, and it'll create a lot less confusion for the people who work here every day, because that's the problem. The clerk and I and, and the superintendent and deputy superintendent, we all have to work here every day, and sometimes we might get a little short with one another when we run into little issues like this. It sounds stupid, but it really isn't, because it's, it's, we all wanna be good. We want the community to be good, and we wanna be transparent about what we're doing as far as our finances, and that's, that's my part, and I'm done tonight. Hope everybody has a nice evening. Thank you.
Thanks.
Were you finished? I also voted no on that. My reasons are similar to what the treasurer said, but more for the items for action. I'm not sure it was ready to be voted on, so, for me, that's why I voted no. You know, once it, once it becomes, you know, massaged and comes better and it comes back to us, then that's okay. But thank you all for the patience and for the comments. We greatly appreciate it.
I just want to say thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think, what is it, six minutes after eight? We are in, oh, we get a vote. See, I'm trying to, first I'm trying to get a, and I'm trying to-
I'll second that.
Yes. Alright.
Um, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Challenger, yes, Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
No.
He's being difficult.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, we are adjourned. There you go.
Yes, he can. He's got a key.